Okay.
Everyone, watch the board.
One more.
That's what we did.
Okay.
I'm gonna find my holder for my notes.
Uh.
You found that?
Sure.
We've got a hack that says make them remember that you.
Perfect.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see, I know.
Oh, we don't, we have very good care of the cross.
Sorry.
And they said.
We care about what's in this stuff.
That's what we're asking you.
But it's just.
Yeah.
You can't do more than that.
You don't want to get angry with me, but.
How does that?
I can be angry at that.
The deal is to just have a video or we don't have a.
I'm gonna count it.
Oh, okay.
We come back.
I'm gonna.
I'm playing up.
I'm.
I'm.
Oh, why?
I'm getting so old. That's all you could.
That's all we know.
You're.
Oh, you saw.
Who you writing like?
I'm just writing one.
I'm.
Okay.
Anybody got one already?
Okay.
Good.
It's five in your pocket?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
There it is.
I didn't know.
Oh, yes, still. Oh.
They.
They just see.
Four.
Four.
Why don't we?
Uh.
Uh.
Whatever.
See, I got some work.
Well.
I thought it was like, you know, I'm.
I like so.
I might need to.
It's. It's like the.
Yeah, except that.
Uh. Uh. It's. Uh.
What we put on our eyes.
Yeah.
It is here to be.
Alright, okay.
Okay, guys. Good evening and welcome to the committee of the hall. Today is Tuesday, August twenty seven. Uh, please, uh, uh, body members, um, Councilor LaPlante, District F, Councilor Dave Abdul, uh, District E, Councilor District A, Maria de la Cruz, Councilor Large Pavel Vallano, and myself, Councilor Express and District D. Uh, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the.
I'm.
And.
I'm.
And.
I'm.
Which stands.
One.
On the.
In the.
This call.
For the.
Uh.
Right, councilors, today. We have one item on the agenda and one new item on the agenda. It's item two fifty nine nineteen. It's the Health and Human Services Department reorganization. It was put together by Frank Bonet. He is here present tonight. Um. Councilors, I would like, uh, I would like to have this opportunity to open this item. But before we continue, I would like to, uh, please get a motion to approve minutes from, from, uh, February twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes average. With that said, item, uh, two fifty nine nineteen, we have Frank Bonet from the, uh, personal, uh, department. He's our personal director. Would like to open the floor for him to explain to us, uh, and go through this reorganization of this department.
Uh, good, good evening. City councilors, Frank Bonet, personnel director thirty, and the notices, uh, was given to the committee on the whole, a subcommittee of the Lawrence City Council, public hearing done today for the purpose to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed reorganization, uh, for the established Health and Human Services Department. A packet was delivered to the council, uh, probably about a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago. Um. Something looked like this. Uh, additionally, the, uh, provided or recommended ordinance were also sent by the city attorney's office, uh, the city attorney, Raquel Juano. I think maybe about five days ago, Thursday, I think it was, Mike, Wednesday or Thursday. And so, uh, you know, the reorganization provided, uh, or the plan provides for the creation of a department, the creation of a, of one position, and including several departments to be included into the Health and Human Services Department as well. So, uh, if you want me to go in detail, I can go in detail. I'm not sure if you want to do the public participation, uh, the public hearing first, or, uh, do you want me to go through? Not sure how that works.
Well, essentially, we are, um, would like to hear from you, if you can, please.
Okay, I think you go, it's gonna be a little while, alright. So, um, as you, as you know, uh, last June, uh, the mayor sent a budget down to the city council for approval. Actually, it was more like April, May, but it was approved in June. Uh, in, in it is a, the budget is a policy document, and it was, uh, a new position, a new department, and he indicated that during the gas emergencies of last year, September, uh, he saw it, uh, a need for a department of Health and Human Services, uh, that would need to be created in order to take, assume some of that responsibility for emergencies and so forth. Um, and so, we did that. Uh, he sent it first in the city budget. Uh, discussion was made during that budget hearing, uh, and I am sending, uh, the documents that will show you exactly what that reorganization, uh, needs to appear to be. And so, if you bear with me, um, on the packet that was provided to you, um, it's something that looks like this. There is a organizational chart, but, uh, just to read it, uh, because there's no overhead here, uh, for me to provide today. The creation is to create a department of Health and Human Services that requires a new ordinance as a new department, and in it, a position of Director of Health and Human Services, uh, non-union contract position that would fall under four three three seven. That means the mayor points and the city council confirms. It's a newly recommended position, uh, requires a new job description and an ordinance, and the classification, of course, and the compensation be a contract position. It was sent as, like that, from the city attorney's office with that same ordinance. Uh, under the Health and Human Services Department, uh, there's a few divisions that will continue being called either department or offices. One of those is the Council on Aging, uh, and so, in the Council on Aging, you have these positions that are not creating new ones. However, there is some changes and some recommendations that we want to go through. Um, as you know, in two thousand and five, I came before city council, I think, maybe Councilor LaPlante was probably one of the only ones here back then. Sorry, not trying to age you. Um, and a compensation classification plan was created. Uh, Bennettson Associates was the consultants that came down with me, and we did for the non-unions. We classified and compensated or provided a compensation plan for non-unions. What we found through this reorganization that we're doing here with the Department of Health and Human Services is that some of these positions were really not ordinance back then. So, although we brought it down as a packet, we, we placed them in the compensation scale and everything, from the city clerk's office or the, so the attorney was, there was, ordinance was never written. And so, we were under the impression that there was an ordinance, we were under the impression these positions were approved because we did receive a vote of the council, and it went up to the mayor, who was the mayor back then, uh, Peter Sullivan, uh, for approval or for veto. And so, he approved it as if there was, you know, all the steps were being taken care of. However, all the steps did not, uh, were not taken care of in two thousand and five by the city attorney and the city clerk. So, we're going to correct some of those in this reorganization, and I'll, and I'll, I'll, I'll begin right now. So, we talked about the Health and Human Services Department and a director. Uh, in this position, it, under that, will be the Council on Aging as, as it currently stands, with the Executive Director of the Council on Aging as the Director of the Council on Aging. That position, uh, is a union position. It is job group number twenty-two. However, as it reads right now in the ordinance, it reads as a non-union position, and it has it under a Barrington scale, a Barrington compensation scale, which was a nineteen seventy compensation scale, very old and very outdated. And so, uh, most likely, the, uh, city attorney, uh, has sent you, uh, in the ordinance packet, ordinance language, to correct the job and the grade to indicate union, job group number twenty-two. That's the grade for the, and that, that union is the Administrators and Supervisors Union. Under that is a Program Administrator. And so, that Program Administrator has been unfunded and unfilled since Executive Director Riley retired, probably in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, he retired, I think it is. So, it's been vacant and unfunded since then. However, that position is also a union position, and it, as it reads right now in the ordinance is, it reads as a non-union, and so, the city attorney has also corrected that and included the ordinance in that packet. Uh, under.
That was for, what position you just?
Program Administrator. So, both the Executive Director of Council on Aging is a union job, and the Program Administrator, which isn't, which is more like a Assistant Director. Uh, both of those are union jobs, however, they're indicated in the ordinance right now as non-unions, but they're not. They're Administrators and Supervisors Union. They have claimed that position, and under the collective bargaining agreement, um, they have indicated those positions belong to the union. So, we want to make that correction in the current ordinance. Um, Coordinator Elder Hispanic Outreach Program. It's a position that was created in two thousand and five as part of the reorganization of two thousand and five. I mean, uh, I'm sorry, not the reorganization, the non-union compensation classification. There's, it's a non-union position. What we would like to do is, uh, remove the word Hispanic from it, um, and just, uh, keep it as outreach, uh, Coordinator Outreach Programs. Uh, and the reason is that, uh, several grants have, uh, been introduced into the Council on Aging, uh, or the Senior Center, or the Center as it's called now. And so, they have more than one. They have, they do have a Hispanic one, but they also have someone who is of a Cambodian, Vietnamese, who speaks the language, so they would like for it to be, you know, just a program, um, Outreach Program Coordinator without specific, uh, you know, nationality or race or whatever. Uh, the next position is a Program Assistant. This position was, was, was created in two thousand and five, was placed in the re, two thousand and five reclassification. It's a non-union position, however, there's no ordinance showing right now in the books in the city clerk's office, and that's where I was indicating in the beginning. It seems like the city attorney and the clerks did not guide the city council as to what was needed. Uh, so, they probably approved it, personnel went to council, and the council approved it thinking the ordinances were already written, and some of them were not written. And that was one of them. So, you'll probably see in the packet of the city attorney, uh, placing that position in a grade one and, and creating a whole ordinance for it.
Well, it's page seven, right?
Uh, so, I'm, I have a, I have a cheat sheet that I'm looking at from my office. Uh, but let me tell you, I'll tell you exactly where, where she has hers. Yes, page seven, correct. The Community Health Specialist Position. Uh, Community Health Specialist. So, we already have a Community Health Specialist Ordinance, however, it's ordinance for the Community Development Department. Uh, it falls under the mayor's health task force. Um, the Executive Director of the Council on Aging, um, who is now the, the Acting Director of Health and Human Services, Martha Velez, had requested or received some grants not too long ago, uh, that asks to do services that would be, be required of this certain position, but for the Senior Center, not for the city, just for the Senior Center. So, um, she accepted the grants, you accepted the grants as a policy document. We really created that position, however, no job description or ordinance was written, and so, this is a new position, it's a non-union position, and you'll see it as well, um.
That's a Community Health Specialist?
Page seven, yes. And it's probably there, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a different, it's ordinance already, it's just in a different department. So, I'm not, you know, she said it doesn't require another ordinance, just requires the approval of that, that same position, just like there's four confidential secretaries, you know, it's just a different department. Uh, Maintenance Coordinator, um, same thing, uh, that's, that's another word for custodian, building maintenance. And so, that position also was reclassified in two thousand and five, but it's not showing in the records, and so, we're here again to, uh, correct that, uh, and you'll see that at page eight. Then we get to the offices of, that's it for the Executive Director of Council on Aging. Um, most of the changes are who that, who the director reports to, ensuring that ordinances reflect from non-union to union, and then ensuring that we correct these two thousand and five ordinances to the record a, a, as we speak.
So, the Gordon, the agent coordinator, oh, the agent director is gonna be a union position now?
Excuse me?
The agent director is gonna be a union position now.
The aging director?
Yeah, aging.
It's always, it's, it's been, since I've been here, it's always been a union position.
Yes, that's what I.
But on, on the books of the ordinance of the city council, it was never corrected to show that. So, anytime a union claims, you know, position and wins that right to, uh, manage those positions, whether it be to the Department of Labor or an agreement between the city and the union, uh, we should have came down to you and said, hey, these positions need to be reclassified, they're no longer non-unions, they belong in certain unions in their group, you know, whatever job group they.
So, before, it used to be a non-union on the books, but it's, on the, on the, on the, in reality, it was a union, a union position.
Mo, most likely, at one point or another, I mean, since the creation of Lawrence, all these positions at one time probably were non-unions, and as unions started picking up in the seventies and eighties, they all became unions, changed, uh, our constitution, I guess, was made in nineteen eighty-six, nineteen, yeah, nineteen eighty-six, so.
So, that's, uh, with this package, that's gonna be fixed.
Correct.
That's gonna be a union position now, on the books.
And then, um, now, we go into the Office of Veteran Services, which is another department that's gonna fall under this Department of Health and Human Services, the mayor has included, and so, the Director of Veteran Services, um, is, is a union position, um, and it only is gonna require classification to show change in supervision and to delineate, um, a job description, because no job description is on file. It's only a little excerpt of a paragraph that, uh, is included in the ordinances. And so, this is a, this, this position is a union position. It's a job twenty-one of the Administrative Supervisors Union. Um, however, the, the supervision is a little, um, how would I say, uh, not tricky, but, um, I think that, uh, it's ideal. So, so the administrative supervision is gonna be under the Director of Health and Human Services, but the general, but the general direction of supervision is gonna be under the, under the mayor. So, if you look at it this way, is this person comes into work, and who approves the time sheets, who knows where they're at, who's approving vacation, who's reviewing the budget, who's, you know, advocating for grants, and so, that'd be the Executive Director doing the administrative supervisions, and probably backing up the Veteran Services Customer Service when he's not in the office, or, uh, both of them, there's only two members, the secretary and, and he. And so, when he's not in his office, whether he be in VA or wherever, the staff will back him up as far as services. And so, the general direction, uh, will be under the mayor. So, the mayor wants, you know, Veteran Services to increase outreach, veteran, you know, celebration, memorials, uh, events, working with the council, uh, you know, for, for World War Two, uh, veteran projects and all kinds of stuff. Uh, so, you know, as far as the tasks and the functions, uh, of one, you know, one fifty, uh, one fifteen of the general laws, those continue to be the same. Those will not change. Um, the, the qualifications that you have to be a veteran will remain, uh, based on, on, on Massachusetts law. However, we're indicating it now to be the powers and the duties, because those powers and duties were delineated. It was just like, under Mass General Law one fifteen E, you know, you provide services to veterans, and, and that was it. And this one more says, you know, what office environment you work, what type of context you have, what type of skills you're needed, of course, a qualification under one fifteen E, uh, who supervises you, how many people you supervise. And so, now we have a four-page job description that if this veteran director were to leave and someone else comes in, they would know exactly everything about the job. Uh, so, um, that was on page ten, I'm sorry. So, you'll see a whole, page ten is really the whole entire Veteran Services Director position. So, so, basically, you know, you know, the bachelor's degree in human relations, social work related field, five years of work experience in social welfare administration, veteran benefit administration, one equivalent combination of education, training, experience, and the education required when he has a bachelor's degree. Um, you know, those are there. Uh, must be an honorably discharged veteran, must have a va, valid Massachusetts driver's license with satisfactory driving records, as this person is responsible, uh, for when a VA, a veteran, uh, is in need of transportation to Bedford, uh, or Manchester for that matter. Most of it is Bedford, uh, that, that veteran takes him and, uh, is, uh, provided, um, gasoline allowance, you know, travel allowance coming back. That's all on page ten.
So, a, a quick question.
Yep.
Uh, the two difference, uh, a few of the difference that I have noticed on the, um, on this section, the Director of the Veterans Affairs, all the Veteran Services, is that on the, on the section that we're deleting, uh, this whole section, for the appointment of that person, it was under the section four point three of the city charter, and, um, the one that we adding is under the section three point seven of the city charter. So, why don't we keep it consistent, uh, under the four point three section instead of the three point seven?
That's a good question. Um, I didn't notice that. We, we, um, you know, when the city attorney asked me, uh, I felt under the impression that all the directors in this reorganization needed to fall under three point seven to allow the appointment and then the confirmation to city council. Um, but I can't recall if Jamie ever came down to the city council when he was approved by, appointed by William, the mayor, Lee William Antigua, so, that's a question I may have to go back and ask, or, or find the answer for that.
No problem.
I'm pretty sure there was a reason for it, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Alright, in terms of the, the, uh, rules and regulations from the state law for these specific positions, are we inconsistent with every section of the law, uh, in terms of their, uh, their Veterans Affairs?
On the veterans, yes, the veterans, definitely, yeah.
I was looking through each one of them, I kinda like saw the whole thing consistent, but, uh, I need to ask you to see if we're missing anything, because I know that some of the sections here, they were kinda like all over the place on the, on the section that we're deleting, and then on the section that we adding, it's more like, um, falling to places in terms of qualifications and so far so what. So, it's more easy to follow
Right.
on this section, but I don't know if we just, we following everything that is, um, on section that we're, and the section that we're deleting on, on page nine.
So, so we reached out to, uh, a couple of, uh, other, other communities, as, you know, for their job descriptions as well, and we've covered everything. The only, the only changes here was that, um, the, the qualification and the salary was not ordnanced, and so, um, not sure how that occurred when the Veteran Services Director was created, that they didn't have a qualification and a salary. Most likely, you know, Mass General Law one fifteen E, you have to be a veteran to be a director. That, that, that was the only, uh, qualification. Um, but in this one, you know, the mayor has, has requested that there be some experience in, in these areas, as well as some educational degree. Uh, so, if you just look at, at the first, uh, page nine, it's just office established, appointment, and the powers and duties generally, and then on page ten, it includes the qualifications and the salary. Other than that, one fifteen, Mass General Law one fifteen, changes up in Massachusetts or is amended, uh, it changes automatically here. It's, we, we don't have to delineate everything on one fifteen.
So, let me ask you a quick question on the qualifications. We're deleting this section, and we have basically no qualification, other than being a veteran. And now, we're including this qualification section, which is, uh, defined by chapter four, section seven, clause forty-three of the Mass General Law, and it's also required bachelor's degree in human, uh, human relations, um, social work or related field. When you say related field, what is, what are you referring to, like?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Uh, when, when, uh, basically, we're deleting, we're deleting.
Related, related field? What, what is another, well, you know, like, okay, so we got human relations, social work, uh, anything falling within that, that area? I wouldn't even say some human resources, uh, if you, you know how to deal with people. You know, my office, we deal with individuals who may have drug addiction, and we, we find them help, or financial issues, family medical leave, medical issues. So, if you know how to help people in that area, that would be a related field, huh?
Can we?
We're looking, we're looking generally for human relations, social work, but if there is someone with a bachelor's degree, and it's a related field, maybe even working with veterans, uh, then we would, we, we would give them credit for that.
Can we, can we get a little more clarification and see if we can, uh, include more fields to
To, to the related field, yeah.
explore more possibilities
Yeah.
Uh, to a good person that can apply.
Sure. I mean, the related field were, is a catch-all.
I know.
I mean, I, I wouldn't include someone who, with an engineering degree, you know, that's not a related field. But sometimes, degrees, you know, they, they create new certificate programs, and associates degree here, and bachelor's, new master's degree are coming out almost every year, you know, so. Alright, I'll do that. Um, any other questions on this one?
Uh, well, uh, if you went through making sure that every requirement of the state law is, is on the adding section of the new ordinance, and, uh, I went through it, like I said, it was, it's, it's very related, I couldn't find any other difference. Uh, but also, let me ask you, is the sup, is the supervisor of the person that is, uh, in charge of the director of the, uh, Veteran Service Director, if that person have to be a veteran?
Um, does that person have to be a veteran? You were like, the Director of Health and Human Services?
Uh, perhaps.
Uh, no, no. Just like the Appointing Authority, uh, who is the general, uh, is in the general direction, which is the mayor, doesn't have to be a veteran either.
I just wanna ask the question because.
Even, let's say, suppose there's no Director of Health and Human Services, the Veteran Services Director right now falls under the direction and the supervision of the mayor. And so, I mean, Mayor Rivera is a veteran, but Mayor Antigua is not. I don't think Mayor Sullivan. and the supervision of the mayor. And so, I mean, Mayor Rivera is a veteran, but Mayor Antigua is not. I don't think Mayor Sullivan was either.
That was the same, the same thought that I have. Counselors, any question on this specific part?
I do.
Why? Um, Councilor Plan? Councilor De La Cruz?
I have a question where it says, um, I had this page.
Uh, so, yeah, you have a, um, I know which one's on.
Counselors, if you have any question in any of the section that we're going through, uh, please let me know.
I have questions throughout.
Throughout, okay. So, Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Asher. Uh, the gas crisis staff, are those people, those people going to stay in that position for a long time?
I'm sorry.
The, the gas crisis staff. You have five staff for that position and it says that it's being paid by the ECCF.
The gas?
Yeah.
Right, so, so those are not, those are, we're not including those in the reorganization. Those are not permanent positions. Those are temporary emergency positions that were created just for the sake of the, uh, the emergency. Uh, however, in the future, uh, they may come back if there's an emergency, temporary emergency positions.
And that's part of the grant.
We're not asking to be ordinance those positions. She just included those in her reorganization chart. So you can see names and, and positions that she currently has and where the money is being expended.
My other question is about, uh, the veterans, uh, director. That, that person only need a high school diploma?
The, the, excuse me?
The veterans, uh, director of veteran services.
The director of veteran services?
Yeah.
Uh, bachelor's degree.
Uh, page ten.
Page, page ten, yes.
I might have it wrong pages because.
Those are the job titles.
Yes, but it says high school diploma.
Councilor De La Cruz, on the package that is related to the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance one is already.
Page ten of that ordinance package.
Okay, I'm gonna look for.
Look like this?
I will.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Do we have a?
Let me see it. Page ten.
Or perhaps on the package that was sent.
So.
Oh, yes, I see enough.
So, so basically, uh, you know, like I said, the ordinance that is applied doesn't have qualifications and salary. Uh, and we're also expanding the job description. So if, I mean, the packet that I provided last week, you don't see any changes on the powers, duties, uh, that are on the ordinance. But what you do see is new essential functions that had been added to the job description. And so what we did, we added fourteen functions. And these functions could change at any moment based on laws. But for the most part, what we cannot change upstairs is the ordinance, which is, you know, the title, the salary, uh, the qualifications or the positions. Those are the ordinance positions. So we have included, you know, uh, duties ranging in the nature of routine or complex, requiring strict adherence to state and federal laws, uh, assisting services to veterans and their dependents, process applications for vet- veterans benefits through state and federal means, direct investigation into the necessities and qualifications of claimants, authorized payments, perform follow-up activities to conform appropriate benefits and assistance, direct and participate in the administration of various benefits available to veterans and their dependents, including pensions, compensation, hospitalization, outpatient treatment, housing, education, bureau and other benefits available under federal and state programs and from various nonprofit entities. Prepare reports to account for funds, reports to state agencies to acquire reimbursement. As you know, we receive back seventy-five percent reimbursement of anything that we, we provide our veterans. Ensure that application, the report conforms to state regulations in order to ensure reimbursement. A previous veteran's services director, I think, lapsed something like three hundred thousand dollars and that was a reason for that individual's departure. Um, so we ensure that that function is there. Prepare and administrate department budget, maintain accurate record of expenses and account balances, provide counseling to veterans and their dependents, refer veterans to appropriate agencies or service providers, assist veterans by providing informational material and advice concerning assistance and benefit opportunities, assist veterans in completing necessary application of the forms and acquiring documentation needed to prove eligibility. Organize and coordinate memorial activities of veterans, coordinate Memorial Day, Independence Day, Veterans Day activities. Ensure that memorial squares and monuments are decorated for appropriate memorial occasions and ceremonies. As a veteran director per MGL one fifteen, section three, receives and processes applications for veterans benefits, financial and medical assistance payment for qualified Navy veterans and their dependents in accordance with one oh eight code of Massachusetts regulations. And as a veteran bureauial agent, prepares and pays eligible claims for the proper bureauial and intimate charges of indigenous veterans or their dependents as per Mass General Law, chapter one fifteen, section seven. As a veteran's grave registration officer, as required by Mass General Law, chapter one fifteen, section nine, maintain the record list of veterans' death within the city, showing date and cause of death, location of grave, name and location of cemetery and dates of wartime service. Periodically attend training seminars and conferences held under the direction of the Massachusetts Secretary of Veteran Services. Obtain and maintain certification as a v- veteran services director, which is required, as required by the Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services to recommend to the city council the amount of aid to be paid to all veterans and their dependents who are entitled to relief, to arrange and provide for medical or hospital care and treatment of veterans and their dependents within the director's judgment such medical and hospital care and treatment is required. And then lastly but not least, perform similar or related work as required or as situations dictate. So those are the functions. And those are not required for your ordinance, but the job description was provided and say, this is the job description we're, we're using. And if any functions in the future change, we'll, we'll ensure that it changes based on Mass General Law. But the qualifications, the duties are where it falls and who supervises it and how much they get paid, those have never been ordinance. Well, at least the salary and the qualifications have not.
Thank you.
And we've never had a, a, a functions delineate exactly what they do, except to say, hey, you fall under Mass General Law one fifteen, but exactly what is that? So we, that's what we've done. We provided, and because it's a union position, we've sent the union correspondents to say, hey, we're coming down before the council of whole to either re ordinance these positions or update these positions or create new ones that you may not have any to do. If you have any issues, please contact me or come before the council. So just want you to know that, you know, if, if there was any impact bargaining to be made, the union has not made that issue.
That is not the case, right?
No.
Councilor La Plan?
Thank you. So I just wanted, I just wanna kinda follow up a little bit on the creation of, uh, or the, the, um,
Reorganization.
Supporting of the veteran service, the veterans department under the Health and Human Services. So, you know, I became aware and just listening to you speak, you actually gave me a hint as to where to go on the Mass General Law. So I had a chance to look up chapter, uh, Mass General Laws, chapter one fifteen, and I pulled up section fourteen there. And, um, I just wanna make sure that, that we are following the Mass General Laws with respect to the independence of that veterans department and that we're not running afoul of, of the Mass General Law. So could, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at section fourteen under, under, um, chapter one fifteen. Uh, it, it talks about, it titlies municipal departments of veteran services, control and direction of commissioner and separate and independent location. And I'll read it and I just wanna get your take on it.
Right.
Section fourteen says, departments established and maintained, under sections ten to fourteen exclusive, shall be under the general direction of the commissioner, and that by the commissioner, talking about the veterans affairs. And they shall be physically located independently of and separate and apart from any other public or private agency, board, bureau, social agency or society, except a department or agency dispersing aid or relief or veterans' benefits under this chapter. I, I think, I think that's, I think that's what's controlling, but I, I just wanted to get your sense of it. So to repeat, this is, uh, this is Mass General Laws, uh, chapter, uh, one fifteen, uh, section fourteen. There's another section, section ten, that's also appears to be germane to this discussion, but I'll leave that out for now. So let me get your take on that.
So, so, so these laws, we've reviewed them with the city attorney's office, uh, and, um, I think that some of the legal opinion that you may wanna hear should come from her. However, from my, my opinion is, if you read that carefully, it's talking about other boards, other committees, it's talking about anything else and it doesn't say anything about a department. You know, it doesn't say anything about council or some other, uh, you know, legislative or directive department in this one. If you really, really read it, it just says, you know, commissions, boards, some, some sort of group other than city council and department or another department.
Well, actually through, through you, Mr. Chairman, that, that, I have, I have the liberty of having this in front of me. So you, and you got a bit of a disadvantage. It does talk on section ten, it does make mention of the mayor in our particular case and the city council with respect to this. Uh, it says, mayors of cities and selected towns, other decision towns being a part of the district, uh, shall be caused to establish and maintain respective cities and towns department for the purpose of furnishing goes on veterans affairs. Uh, versus, there's a section here that just talks, that mentions the council as being a part of that. Which of course, right now, I'm not finding as quickly as I would like to.
That was my point, I mean.
But it's, but, but given a little bit of time, I'm sure I could find that again and, and, and show it to you. But anyway, but it does mention that. So, but I just, I just, this is, as you can imagine, a pretty sensitive topic. I mean, uh, the legislature, it could be argued, had our veterans in such high esteem that they don't want to have anybody except for the top person in the, in, in, in local government to report to them, one would argue. Um, and, and here, I just wanna make sure that if we're going down this path, that we're not running afoul again of what the, of what the framers of this law, because you're a veteran, I mean, through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you're a veteran, you understand, uh, the sensitivities and, and, and the sacrifice and, and, uh, that, that you have made um, as a veteran. Um, and you have family as well, I know that as well, as, 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 as veterans. So we hold these, these individuals in some regard, right, because of their sacrifice. And I think, I think that the Mass, the legislature and the governor, whoever signed this to the law, shared that as well and codified that, I believe. So, um, I just, I just wanna make sure we're on that. I guess I, 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 at this point.
Maybe, maybe a legal opinion by the city attorney's office would be.
Yeah, I, I don't feel completely comfortable right now where I'm going with this.
I, I understand.
I kinda like what we're, I kinda like what we're doing here, maybe. I can be sold on it, but this one piece right here.
And I, and I do wanna make sure that, you know, from, from, from the mayor's perspective, uh, that's why he has included under the administrative supervision of the director of health and, just administrative stuff. Uh, but it's still under the general direction and supervision of the mayor. So the mayor's is, is, Jamie in the mayor, Jamie at this point, but, you know, future directors, the mayor still is supervising. Mayor still does performance evaluations if he needs to. Mayor still disciplines him. The mayor still suspends him, uh, cuts his pay or gives him a salary increases. None of that is being done by the executive director. The executive director, I mean, I'm sorry, the director of human's, uh, human and health services is gonna do the daily stuff. You know, are you in or you not? Do I sign the timesheet to say that you should get paid for these hours? Where are you today? Are you in the VA office or are you on the streets that can care to veteran or are you home? Should I put you sick? Should I put you on vacation? Should I use a personal time? Uh, can I review your budget to ensure that it's accurate before going to the city council? Uh, what do you need from me? Do you want me to go ahead and start writing out from grants that you may need grants to help veterans? How can I help on an emergency basis such as the September emergencies to veterans that might have needed this?
Alright.
Did we approach them, you know, those are the administrative stuff. Not so much, you know, trying to, uh, pull back on the one fifteen, uh, trying to say you can't spend that much money. That, that, that's a fault. I remember a few, a few mayors back, they tried that. They were spending, no, it was a few mayors back, it was a couple of mayors back. They were spending a lot of money on veterans reimbursement and he said something to the veteran services director like that. That doesn't work like that. You can't tell me not to give veteran services their money.
Well, um, um, basically what Councilor Plan and a couple of the counselors are saying is that we should clarify those specific duties. Since we all believe based on what is in front of us that the veterans, uh,
Seems like Jamie has been making his phone calls. I understand.
New reorganization and none of Charlie, uh, directly under the mayor like it is right now.
I understand.
That's fair to clarify.
It just, just, I, I'll, I'll, I'll speak. I, I just want greater clarification. I'm not saying that what we're doing here is wrong, but I just wanna make sure that what we're doing is right.
Totally, totally. I agree. I, I agree.
So that's another question that we, we would like.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor Payano?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I have questions, uh, on that line before I get there. Just, uh, more like definition type of questions. Union job grade twenty-two, what range is that?
Uh, I don't have their salary chart in front of me. I don't know.
Okay.
But, but let me just say that.
Councilor Payano, on page ten, say in job grade twenty-one.
No, no, I don't. Okay, some of them are twenty-two, twenty-one, eighteen.
Actually, some of them are sixteen, exactly. So, so I, I do have a salary chart upstairs. Uh, however, let me just say that those salary charts change with any negotiations with the union. So if you get a two percent increase this year or three percent increase or one percent increase, those salary ranges adjust every, every time that, um, the, the, the contract is, is negotiated and approved and, and approved by the council as well.
Right. Well, yeah, no, I, I just think it's, you know, it'd be reasonable for, um, counselors to, to know what union job grade twenty-two, you know, actually means.
Uh, is that, is that the, is that the one for the executive director?
That's the one for the executive director, but then my next question.
Yeah, so they only get like, she, she would only get sixty-five thousand dollars. I think that was twenty-two.
So, so, yeah, so my next question would have been, you know, what does grade twenty-one mean? So if, if we can just get, uh, the list of ranges, I think that would be, um, that would be great. Um, on that line, so one of the things that I saw is that, so for the director of the, I, I, I just, I'm trying to understand the thought process around this. So for the director of the Department of Health, it's seven years' experience, um, bachelor's degree and seven years' experience, um, five supervisory experience, and then the executive director is four years of experience. Recreation is, let's see.
What page, what page are you on, on the recreation?
Uh, so I, so page two says seven years of experience from director of Department of Health and Human Services. On page five, it says, um, four years of experience as for the executive director of the, uh, council of, uh, for, um, for, uh, well, we'll skip the vets because we've talked about the vets a lot, um. At some point here, it mentions the, there we go, it's for the, the recreations.
Page sixteen, you talking about?
Yeah, um, how many years of experience?
So.
Okay, so it's bachelor's degree and five years of experience. Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, it's, it sounds like experience wise, um, that these directors are gonna be very close, um, aligned. If you're having a director in that position, um, why aren't you, you know, putting something like masters preferred or more experienced than, um, than just five years, um, in supervision?
So, so these are just the minimum, the minimum qualifications that the council will ask for.
Right.
If they have more, that's fine. So what happens with the administrators and supervisors' unions, the only union in the city that do not have language in their contract that allows us to move anyone in the salary range. So if you come with a master's degree and we're only requiring a bachelor's degree, we can, and we send you an offer. we can, and we send you an offer letter based on the salary range, saying, hey, this is where we're gonna start you at, and you counteroffer and say, this is why I think I should get paid more, I have a master's degree when you asking for bachelor's, we will review that, and based on our budget, based on money, based on the person's qualification, we can increase the salary in that range, based on that. Another one is the non-unions. The non-unions have specific language that says, you must start at the lowest level of the salary range, and after six months, you can get up to the mid-level. You could come a little higher under the mid-level if the personal director re- review, if reviews your qualification and determines that your counteroffer is indicative of a higher education that you may have, or more experience, or whatever the benefits are to the city. Other than that, every other union, you must start at step level one. So that's why for this union, which is mostly all administrative supervisor unions, they have no language, so the minimum. However, that doesn't preclude you from changing it right now. You've taken a vote and say, I wanna include the master's degree preferred, and then send it back up, ordinance rewritten, and send it back down. Actually, that's what we should have done on the personnel, that's what the personnel committee is there for, right? So the, the way it works is the personnel committee receives the job descriptions first, and they determine whether they like this qualification, right? Or whether they like, you know, the duties and the functions, and they make changes there, and then they send it up, right? So the ordinance committee receives, they say, oop, yeah, okay, we agree with you, we like it, we'll send it up to the city attorney's office, where the city attorney will write the ordinances and send it back down to, to the ordinance committee, and the ordinance committee approves it, right? That's the way it goes. However, on a reorganization, it's a little trickier. We are only, we only have twenty-one days to approve a reorganization under your rules, and so.
That's if.
Huh?
That's if.
That's if, that's if, 'cause it'll be a shorter amount of time. Actually, that twenty-one days to have a public hearing, I think it is. Not to approve it, to have a public hearing.
Once, once we are joined, and then we have thirty days to report to the council, fourteen days to make a decision.
No, on a reorganization, very different. Trust me, I read this thing like you would believe. Actually, Bill Maloney gave me a great education on it, and I'm not gonna argue with Bill.
That's if we are joined in the meeting.
Yeah, and the, and the public hearing, I think it was twenty-one days for, for reorganization, so that's why they can go that mark, but I think that you still can make those changes.
So you're saying that, yeah, that you'd be.
These are recommended, recommended job description, recommended ordinance, not necessarily, I'm telling you this was.
So the reason I say that is that, um, this individual now has the Board of Health, uh, underneath them. Um, they have other commissions that are dealing with sort of, uh, the director of the Health and Human Services.
Yes, okay.
So, um, dealing with that, I would think that you would want someone that has a master's in public, uh, public health, it's not a master's in public health, at least a master's in, in, in public affairs, um, or, or public policy. That, that, you know, that would be, you know, my, my thought frame, uh, behind that. So that's why I, I sort of wanted to bring it up. Um, the other part.
Maybe some experience with veterans?
I'm sorry?
Maybe some experience with veterans?
I mean, yeah, sure, I think that, that, that part, it, you know, it, it would be preferred, right? But also, if you are having, um, I'm not even thinking about the current, uh, state, right? I think anytime someone, you know, while we're passing this, we're looking at the current players, right, the current employees. I'm thinking ten years down the line, right? If you have someone who's, um, the director of Veterans Affairs, and they happen to have a little bit more than the, or recreations, they happen to have a little bit more than the five years of experience, and you hire someone with seven years, just seven years of experience and a bachelor's degree, right? And, you know, nothing else would this individual think that, um, you know, that the person supervising them has the qua- you know, the qualifications.
Has the same as me, a bachelor's degree.
Exactly. You know, so, so that's my thought frame. I'm not thinking about the current players, I'm sure their relationship is great, but I think, you know, in the future, we wanna make sure that whoever we hire for, uh, you know, that type of position, um, is someone that's qualified, just not with experience, but also qualified on that academic factor.
Right.
Because to be dealing with, um, you know, in particular, the Board of Health, and it sounds like, you know, I like the direction that this is going, uh, you know, you need someone that is grounded in sort of like that, I, I mean, I don't know what I'm saying. Someone that's grounded in that policy work, someone that's grounded in the work that all these departments are doing. So that's why I wanted to bring that up.
Sure.
Um, and just talking about, so the other part, I think maybe, um, the vice president might have mentioned it. Um, I found it strange that it's all, like, all these positions are all not in just under one chapter. Or one, you know, it's like chapter two, one ninety, and then it's gonna be two, one twenty, and it's gonna be really spread out throughout the entire ordinances. I think if, if you're going this route, you probably want it all, you know, all together.
So I, I can't, I can't answer that question, because I don't assign numbers to, uh, ordinances. It's the city attorney, and they have a particular system. Uh, some of the positions that have, were created, quite sometimes were created with a number already for a department, and so you'll see, like, for instance, the recreation, the veterans, they were already created with a department and a number way long ago, right? And so, I, 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 what you're trying to say is like, because the executive director now is two point one nine oh, you should just take all of those and delete all those ordinances and put new numbers on them, put them.
So, so we are, so, so it sounds like we are deli- we're deleting a lot of those, the old ordinances and changing them.
Not the numbers though, I think the numbers remain.
We're, we're keeping the numbers, but I'm saying if you're going in this route, you might as well put it all together, 'cause it sounds like it's, this, i- i- it's becoming neater, right? It's, you're, you're modernizing it.
For system, system process wise, yeah.
Right, so I think that the, that's the, the, the next step.
I would think, I would think so, but I'm not, they're not my numbers, so I can't tell you.
My, my guess is, is that the, the city attorney just put the same numbers.
Uh, yeah, definitely, yeah. No, she asked me, how do you want, the, the question that what she, she proposed to me is how, how do you, where do you want the Department of Health and Human Services? Do you want to create a, a new number for that? And I think, yes, definitely, it's a new department, create a new number, so that way we won't have to stick that into a different department number. You know, I don't wanna stick it under, you know, city council or city clerk, because it doesn't really belong, it belongs under its own. Now, I, we did not discuss changing any of the other ordinances that were already created that we're trying to update, and, you know, following up, 'cause in sequence order to the new department, yeah.
Listen, I'm, I mean, I'm just one person, but, you know, my OCD-ness would think that it would all fall online. Um, the other question that I had is, you know, sort of, uh, following up on Councillor Plant's, um, statement around, um, the vet- Veterans Affairs, uh, you know, I think it'd be important to get, you know, something from the city attorney sort of explaining how this doesn't conflict, um, with, uh, Mass General Law. Um, I think that there's, you know, there's two, um, there's two thought frames, like, one, you know, it's Mass General Law, the second one is the question of whether, um, you know, the, someone would want a, someone in between the mayor and the, um, the Veterans Department, um, you know, and I, and I think I understand the thought, the thought frame behind, you know, maybe gives the le- the mayor less to do, um, but the mayor has a chief of staff, a deputy chief of staff. So I'm trying to understand.
Not, not ordinance, right? Not ordinance?
Okay, someone, someone. Maybe that isn't true, I don't know. Um, uh, don't kill the messenger.
I didn't hear that.
Uh, so anyway, so, uh, you know, so things like, you know, when you say ad- administrative, um, direction, right, it sounds like it's, it's, if, you know, I mean, not if National Law is true, National Law is National Law. So it sounds like, you know, we're, we're sort of trying to circumvent that a little bit by saying it's just the administrative direction. Um, but, you know, if the, if the thi- if the administrative direction is approval of, um, someone's, like, um, time, I don't think we need a new position for that, you know? The mayor can just assign his chief of staff to, or, you know, they can all be done under the mayor's office. So outside of that, like, what else is administrative direction?
It's a great argument if the veteran's services director would be the only position falling under the Director of Health and Human Services, but it's not. She, this position would have a, a whole sort of directors under her, and some, in some of, in some cases, uh, some administrative positions as well, some secretaries, some clerk that probably falls under the administrative offices of hers. So it's not like we're creating this one position just, just above Jamie underneath there, you know what I'm saying? We're not.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, yeah, no.
No, but I, that's what I heard. I'm like, you know, we're creating this one position for just a timesheet. And it's not so much timesheet, there's a lot of things that we do administratively throughout the day, complaints. You know, we receive complaints, and my, my clerks receive, my staff receive complaints, and I get up my off, desk, and I, you know, I'm in charge of those, hearing those complaints. Sometimes they're long, sometimes the complaints are against me, sometimes they go to my boss. So this is the administrative version is whether the job is being done correctly.
Okay, so time.
Not so much about, you know, whether you're giving a, a, a veteran or not his or her due funding, service. It has nothing with, with, with access, just accountability purposes. Are you doing your job correctly, period?
So, so your understanding of administrative direction is, um, approval of time, um, if complaints arise, is there anything else that you think might fall?
Review of budgets.
Review of budgets.
Yep, uh, calling for, um, calling for any grants, writing for the Veteran Services Department, communicating with any department, including schools, as to assistance that the Veteran Services offices may need during some of these memorials or some of these events throughout the city.
But, I mean, would you call that administrative direction, though?
Well, listen.
It sounds, it sounds like it's support, a little bit.
So, yeah, so let's say, let's say, I'm, I'm, I'm the, the Veteran Services Director, and I really need, you know, a hundred and fifty chairs for a particular event. Do I really wanna call the mayor? He's my boss. If I can't get it from DPW, and I can't get it maybe from the school department, and I need some help in getting it, do I call the mayor?
I mean, but do they call the mayor? Do they call the mayor's office? 'Cause I think, you know, anytime that I had, I had an issue.
Well, who's the boss?
I, I, I would call, um, the chief of staff, Eileen Bernal, and, you know, things would be worked out.
The veteran, but the, the chief of staff is not the veteran services director's supervisor.
Correct, the mayor.
Not the way it shows right now, right? You would, you would call your boss.
Okay, so let me.
Does the boss say, hey, uh, hold on a minute, or the boss will be like, listen, I'm gonna put you the chief of staff, she'll help you out, or he'll help you out. If there was a.
So, um, just, just a follow-up question on, 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 on Councillor Payano's, uh, thought. So if, if something happened with this person, that perhaps it's, you have to be right up, who's gonna, who's gonna be doing that?
So the supervision and anything else associated with pay, salary, uh, it's, it, you know, pays and salaries and any benefits, it's under the collective bargaining agreement. Of course, the mayor enters it, he has a team that enters it to negotiation with the union. But if anything has to do with discipline, um, or any performance evaluations of any sort, it'll be the mayor. That's, that's, that's why it reads, that's why it reads here that, uh, it's still under the, page ten. It's still under the general direction and supervision of the mayor. Um, all, all the Director of Health and Human Services is doing administrative. If you want, I'll delineate, uh, you know, before you, for this document, I can delineate and send each one of your lists of what administrative supervision requires. I have those things upstairs in my office.
Um, but it's go- it's on the, on the send, on the send line, section B, it says, under the administrator's supervision of the director and general direction and supervision of the mayor.
Correct.
So it's gonna be two supervisors.
And, yep, and that's what I've been mentioning since the beginning, since we sat down. So the administrative supervision, as we discussed, and then the general do- supervision is, is the mayor. The mayor is ultimately the person who disciplines him, awards him, gives him a pat on the back, you know, uh, sits down, discusses why his, you know, his budget is coming to him short, or, you know, over, or anything that has to do with future, uh, additional positions, you know, that's all the mayor.
So let me ask you a question, um, and I'll give you the, the floor, Councillor Payano, in a minute. Um, we have four different directors under this new position.
Right.
Uh, any, what's gonna be the difference between these four supervi- uh, directors and any other supervi- or any other director throughout the city?
So, so it's in the same, it's in the same format as the reorganization for the Office of Planning and Development, right? In two thousand and, I think it was two thousand and, two thousand and five, right after we did the, the re- the classification compensation scale for the non-unions, we did a reorganization for the Office of Planning and Development. It was the Office of Planning and Development. Two thousand, two thousand and five, two thousand and five. I was here. Two thousand and five, there was a reorganization done. It was the Office of Planning and Development. Um, there was an individual who was the director, the Housing Urban Development, uh, Department was not happy with the City of Lawrence, and they had just frozen five million dollars that year, that we would not be able to spend in grants. Actually, they were funding the whole entire department. So in order for us to unfreeze those five million dollars, and then five more million dollars next year, and whatever amount of money extra would be coming throughout the years, they required us to do a reorganization, and at the same time, they voted no confidence in the director at that bo- at that time. And so, with a consultant and a HUD representative, we sat down and recreated a series of job descriptions, because most of the job descriptions had no education, um, had limited experience, and so it looked like anyone in every world could qualify. And the money was, was being received, but, uh, the department was not appropriately reporting or auditing how they were spending that money, and they had no, no confidence. Uh, Mayor Sullivan, you know, actually, it was my second month here, uh, tapped me and said, I can do it, first year, tenth month. And, uh, we did a reorganization of Office of Plan and Development. What we agreed with HUD was that we would split off the planning department by itself, the community development department, including the economic development. They were not going to pay for the economic development director position that was out of the mayor's office, and they included a housing division within the department, and they split it all up. Fast forward to, what, two thousand twelve, two thousand twelve, I think it's? Mayor Rivera comes down and says, hey, this is not working, the split that, that was, because nobody's talking to each other. Everybody's doing their own thing, and we, we believe that there's, this needs to be, this needs to come back together. It needs to come back together with somebody up here, and, and lo and behold, Office of Plan and Development Director, which is Teresa Park, now is in charge of Community Development, Economic Business, right? Housing, um, Inspection Services Department, and all the communication now is being done. And in the same format, in the same fashion, that the reorganization is re- being requested, it's so that way all these departments can talk, so they can be all under one umbrella and serve the public.
Uh, uh, thank you, um, councillor.
Sorry for the long history.
Um, you know, so, so, uh, all I'll say on that is that, you know, and in my mind, while I'm under the belief that, um, the, the line of, you know, communication between the mayor and the director of veterans should be direct, I completely understand, um, you know, and respect if there's a change in that within the administration. I think it's important, though, that it complies with Mass General Law, um, and that we're not trying to circumvent Mass General Law. So if we're not, and it's, it's very clear, and I will be honest, this, these administrative, like, I don't know if that, um, if the National Law that, um, was read, thank you, um, councillor for, for bringing that up, I don't know if it necessarily applies to, uh, to what we're doing. Um, if it doesn't, great, but if it does, the administrative, um, wording seems like it's, we're just trying to do like a, a roundabout on that, and that makes me feel a little weird. Um, the next question, it's not even a question, just a statement, uh, to my fellow councillors. Um, the Department of Human Rights has a position, I mean, Director of Human Rights, um, actually, um, Director Bernay, when was the last?
So I haven't got, I haven't gotten to that department yet. I think we stopped at, I think we stopped at Director of Veteran Services.
I won't, I won't get there.
We're gonna get one by one.
This is the most surprising.
So just, we're the veterans right now.
Director of Veteran Services, I think that was the, the one, yeah.
Alright.
Actually, there is any other question from, uh, about this? Alright, we can, we might continue with the next one.
So, so the next, the next two positions are positions that have never been funded and have never been filled. Since I've been here, and I've looked in the record, and before I was here. And that is the Deputy Director of Veteran Services and the Assistant Director of Veteran Services. Those two positions have never been filled, they are currently ordinance, and I asked the mayor, during this reorganization, do you wish for me to abolish those posi- positions? Do you want me to ask the city council to delete those positions for ordinance? And he said, absolutely not, leave them in place. So, what we did not have on those two positions, we did not have a qualification and a salary. And those, uh, the city attorney has, uh, provided those for you on, uh, page eleven. Uh, so the deputy director would be still under, it's, both of those are union positions, it's under the collective bargain agreements. They have filed rights to these positions, and so, uh, for the Deputy Director Supervisor Administrators Union Job Grade Eighteen, and for the Assistant Director Supervisor Administrative Jobs Sixteen. I'll get you the salary chart as, uh, Councillor Payano has requested. Uh, and also, uh, the confidential secretary. Uh, and also, uh, the Confidential Secretary in the City, uh, on the Office of Veteran Services, there is no ordinance. So, Mayor Lantigua had posted a position, Confidential Secretary, believing that there is already ordinance position of Confidential Secretary Personnel, Police, Mayor's Office and City, uh, Clerk, Attorney's Office, but, uh, the one at, uh, the Veteran Services was never ordinance. And so, we've created an ordinance and we placed it is on page eleven.
So.
However.
Counselor on this?
Yeah, okay.
On the Deputy Direct, and the Deputy Direct, Dep- Deputy Director, you require, or you actually asked for a master degree. Um, and that's, that's gonna be a preferable, uh, degree on that. Why we're asking, we're asking for, for the Deputy in Masters? I mean, that's prefer.
The other, the other de- department that, um, Mayor has included into the Department of Health and Human Services is the Human Rights Position. Um, let me give you a little history of the Human Rights Position. When I came here in two thousand and four, the Human Rights Position was like this young commission that had just been created based on ordinance, um, with no Executive Director and no support, and no support staff. And those positions were not funded as well. Uh, under Mayor Sullivan, he funded the Executive Director of Human Rights. Um, I believe we posted that position back then, I remember. However, the salary was low. Um, and at that time, we had a consultant that we had hired in order to educate the Human Rights Commission and also to educate the Executive Director coming in, how to do investigations associated with human rights. And, um, we've never got to choose an Executive Director, however, my secretary was placed there in a temporary acting or emergency basis, I forget what it was, um, Ms. Cafal. She had master's degree, five languages, the girl was intelligent, she passed away, rest in peace, uh, shortly afterwards. And since then, we've had no Director in that department. And I'm not sure how the commission is running, cause I've not, I have no jurisdiction. So, uh, the mayor has asked that the Human Rights, not the Commission, but the, the Executive Director of Human Rights fall under that division as well as an Administrative Assistant and you see it as one-third. So, um, I believe in the budget, it has an Administrative Assistant that works half-time for the Recreation Division Department, one-third for the Human Rights and one-third for... Recreation, Human Rights, and there's another one that is not here. It's not part of this reorganization, but another department. Um, oh, the ADA Commission, you know, American Disabilities Act Commission. So, that, that, that's not part of this reorganization, however, this position of Administrative Assistant gives one-third of their time to the ADA Commission, one-third to the Human Rights and then another half FTE, which is half a full-time employee to the Recreation Division.
Who does that?
Who does that right now?
The one-third, one-third percent?
The Administrative Assistant. So, you see, um, let me get that for you on the page, so that we can see.
No, I see it now.
I'm looking at a sheet, sheet, so.
That's being deleted.
Huh?
That's being deleted, right? So, so now, okay, I get what you're saying. So, you're saying that now we're creating an Executive Director position? Cause before.
An Administrative Assistant.
So, now it's an Executive Director.
Uh, page three, page three. And, and I put it on the Human Rights just to show, but page, because, did we get it in Recreation? No, because we haven't, we haven't gotten to Recreation. Okay, so, on page three, the Administrative Assistant, you see it says Recreation, ADA, Human Rights. So, under the duties, it gives one-half time to the Recreation Director, one-quarter time to the ADA Coordinator and one-quarter time to the Human Rights Commission. So, it's one position that will be providing support to three different, uh, areas.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
Um, currently, is the Human Rights Commission active?
I don't know that. I guess I, I don't have jurisdiction with them. The last time I heard, I don't think too many meetings are being conducted. I don't even think they have a forum. I don't know if they have enough members. You have to ask the mayor, who's in that commission. I, I was following them for, for a little while because my, my, like I said, my secretary used to be half-time Executive Director. Um, was getting a stipend to do that, doing investigations. However, eventually would have, it would have been a conflict because Human Rights have investigatory rights over jobs and that includes the Personnel Department. So, if they want to investigate my office, somebody claiming some kind of violation in human rights, they cancel. So, but she passed away before that was even, um, you know, she was just holding on until they get an Executive Director. So, I, I don't know, you know, since then, what, what has been going on with that.
It's just, it's, it's hard to fan.
Isn't it important?
Yeah, no, it is an important, it is an important, um, board.
So, let, let me just say something about this Human Rights Executive Director because if you look at, I mean, the ordinance is really, is written really funny. Um, let me see, it's in page... If you get there before I do, let me know. So, it doesn't say here, but if you look at the ordinance, it just says, "The Staff of the Human Rights Commission." That's all it says. The Staff of the Human Rights Commission. And in that little small three-sentence paragraph, it says, "An Executive Director of Human Rights." It doesn't have qualifications, doesn't have salaries, doesn't delineate duties, doesn't say anything about who supervises it, nothing at all whatsoever. And so, you'll see on page thirteen, um, that they're, you know, kind of... And this is another position that we sent down in two thousand and five as well, that we can't find currently in the ordinances. This is another one of those. So, it's nothing new. We've posted it before, thinking it's ordinance, but it was never ordinance and so we're correcting that as well. And that's page thirteen and page fourteen. This is all new, page thirteen and fourteen on the Executive Director. Like I said, if you look at, at your current ordinance on, on, on municipal code, you'll see just Staff of the Executive, uh, Staff of the Human Rights Commission. There should be an Executive Director that will be, that will report to the Human Rights Commission. That's it. No qualifications, no nothing. In the ordinance that it currently is in, I think it's two point one oh four point zero four zero, how it reads, that little paragraph. And I believe that, um, the City Attorney has, uh, placed a new number on it, which is two point one oh four point zero six zero. And then after that, uh, after the Administrative Assistant, of course, the Recreation Director position. Uh, and with that one, we are looking.
Oh, before, before you continue.
Yeah.
Counselor, there is any questions on the Human Rights Commission?
Uh, and I don't see it here. I'm wondering whether it's included in the packet for the Recreation Director.
Fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen.
Yes, okay. So, uh, the Recreation Director and the Assistant Recreation Director, both are union positions under the Administrative and Supervisors Union. Um, so, in, in this reorganization or this request, we're asking that the Recreation Director fall on the Department of the Director of Health and Human Services. Uh, and then we've also included, because, uh, there wasn't... I think it was qualifications and salaries needed to be upgraded. There was qualifications and there was salaries. So, we're just asking for it to fall under... The Director, if you look at page sixteen, it says duties, number one, under the administrative direction of the Director of Health and Human Services and the general direction of the mayor. And then it's delineates what, um, the Director of Recreation shall, shall do, which is supervise, plan, direct, promote cities' recreation and so forth. The Assistant Recreation Director, um, does not need to fall under the executive, falls under the Director of Recreation. Uh, I think we have... I'm not sure what's, there's been change there, so I would have, I'd have checked on that one. I think it's qualifications. Qualifications, including an associate's degree in sports management, whereas in page sixteen, you don't see any qualifications. And there's no salary also on page sixteen. So, we've included those in page seventeen. So, those are the only changes that I see to that. Same thing with the Director of Recreation, we don't see any salary and benefits, so we've included that on page seventeen as well.
That position, yes, thank you. Uh, that position of Director of Recreation, it has one Director, one Assistant and it has another Director with a different qualification.
No, so page fifteen is telling you how it currently reads in the ordinance. And so, page sixteen is what we would like to change it to. So, that's why you see two Directors of Recreation. However, there is a Director of Recreation, an Assistant Director of Recreation and an Administrative Assistant at half the time that's included in there. And that's that page three that we talked about earlier. So, he, he'll benefit, right now, um, Nelson will benefit and Nelson Ortiz is Director of Recreation benefits of, of having an Administrative Assistant half the time in his office. Whenever the ADA Commission meets on their meetings, um, that Secretary of the Administrative Assistant goes and ensures that packets are available for that commission, takes the minutes to that commission and does anything that the commission may require as a follow-up. And then she provides also, and she, it's a she at this moment, um, you know, one-quarter time to the Human Rights. However, I can't tell you if the Human Rights is meeting. I know that, I know the ADA Commission is an active commission. Which, by the way, soon, shortly, they should be selecting their first ADA Coordinator that falls on the Department of Public Works because they've been interviewing for those. Um, after you've reclassified to a higher salary, we receive a lot more applicants for it. So, we're looking forward to that.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Council of Vayano.
Um, why is this, um, why is this under the administrative direction of the Director of Health and Human Services and not the general direction of the Health, of the Director of Health and Human Services? Or, you know, or anything that's a little bit more... What's, what's the term that he uses here? He used another one, um, direct supervi- I think in some, somewhere here, you use direct supervision. I'm just trying to understand.
So, so, so under the administrative direction of the Director of Health and Human Services and the general direction of the mayor.
Right, no, I understand that. So, I, I, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to understand, so what was the logic behind that? Why isn't it, um, the general direction of the Director of Health and Human Services?
So, so you're saying why, why not just give it to the Health and Services?
I'm try, so, I, I'm not saying why not give it, I'm trying to understa-, you know, um, you guys wrote this, you guys had a train of thought.
They put it this way. That's the way the mayor wanted. Not sure why.
You're not sure why? Okay.
Did you recommend anything to the mayor?
We sit down and we, we discuss these things, yeah.
And he disagreed on that?
So, oh, this particular one, I, I, I can't recall if he did or not. I don't, I don't think he disagreed. You know, we present all the job descriptions in a draft format, we sit down and have meetings and we go through it and we change and we, you know, modify and draft format. And then, once we get the final version, we send it down. So, I can't recall if he said anything hard or not about this one. Is it, is it, do you think it, it should? I mean, if you think it should, you could vote on it. I'm not sure.
You guys are presenting it, so.
So, 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 not that if.
So, if you guys don't think, I mean, obviously.
It's also the same, same thing as we talked about the Veteran Services Director, right? That's the same language that the Veteran Services Director have. The administrative, day-to-day work of, you know, coming in where you're at, doing what you gotta do, making sure your staff, your office has staff available, um, backing you up in case you are out or something like that, you know.
How is that different from direct supervision?
So, so, no, you're talking about general supervision. The mayor has.
So, 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 with, with, within, within this packet, there's direct supervision, general supervision and administrative supervision.
So, direct supervision is this. I'm telling you, I want you to do this right now. That's, I just gave you a director. I want you, that's, it's, it's like, I'm on you, like.
Okay, so what you're saying is that this pers-
A general direction is, listen, we're having, uh, an event next week and I need you to coordinate and make sure everything goes well. You're on your own to do it. You're, that was just a general direction. I'm allowing you as a Director to take the initiative and do what you gotta do. As a direct supervision, that's very different. There is more communication, there's more coordination, there's more direction on that one.
So, if you're my administrative supervisor, um, you administer my time, vacation, your, your... Like, you know when I'm coming in the office.
Complaints.
Okay.
Maybe I wanna review your budget, where you at, with your expenditures.
Do you do a six-month review with me?
No, that would be whoever has either general supervision or direct supervision. The administrative, whoever has the administrative supervision is just administrative.
Okay, I just, it just administrat-, I mean, it's, we're, we're talking, like, you know.
So, so in this case, Martha cannot super, cannot provide a performance evaluation to Jamie.
So, let's, let's talk about what the.
Cannot provide any performance evaluation, cannot perform any disciplined action against Jamie, anything like that. She could go with Jamie to the office and maybe put a boot up his butt, but nothing that you can write it up and make it part of the personnel file. That falls to the mayor.
So, is this, it's the same for the Director of Recreation?
Same for the Director of Recreation, right.
And why is there a difference between the, uh, outside of mass general law that, you know, was stated for the Veterans Department? Why is there a difference between the Director of Recreation, Director of Veterans Affairs and Director of Counsel on Aging? Why is that a direct supervision and not an administrative supervision or whatever?
That's a good question. I'm, I'm about to, have to ask and ask and I'll, I'll get back to you with an answer on that one, yeah.
Was that question that you wrote in?
I mean, I could asso-, I assume I already have an answer, but I'm not gonna give you my assumptions. I'll, I'll ask and give you.
Okay.
I, I mean, the, I think.
So, I'm not in either way, I'm just trying to understand, like, the logic behind it.
But I, I think, I believe, just as everybody here knows, Ms. Martha Dallas has assumed the role of Director of Health and Human Services up to this point, including salary. It was approved in the budget so that... So, the Executive Director of the Counsel on Aging currently is vacant up to such time that the Counsel approves her in this position and then we could post that position and we could negotiate that with the union about who does this supervision.
So, we're doing this complete backwards?
Oh, definitely. The cart came before the horse.
So, I, I, I definitely don't want, there's already someone sitting in this role, um, and, uh...
But I think, I think, I think.
But like, I, I think when I look at this, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, that's what I'm saying. I'm trying not to think about the people that are here right now. I'm trying to think about like ten years from now.
Future, right.
Right? So, uh, like, I, for that, I, I just, I just have to see the logic behind this new individual being the direct supervisor of the Counsel on Aging, cause in that, in that, in, you know, initially, I thought that they were the direct supervisor of everyone underneath. Now, it's just this. Now it's just this administrative, honestly, you know, it's a interesting word, because um.
No, it's it's an, actually, it's.
It means very different from.
It's part, it's part of our, um, I think I provided to every council a couple of years ago, maybe last year, the non-union classification scale, how we how we rate these union, non-union positions. And you get points for supervising someone, you get points for how many people you supervise, you get points for how large the amount of people you supervise. And in that, there's a page that breaks down every type of supervision there is in the city of Lawrence.
Can we can we get a?
I'll give it to you again. I know I gave everyone a copy, the whole entire, uh, I'll give it to you again, I'll give it to you again. But it breaks it down. It has, it has stuff that we haven't even applied to any job descriptions.
Oh, um, and then also in the the Director of Department of Health and Human Services, it does. I'm sorry, I take it back. Thank you.
So let me ask you a quick question. Uh, any of these positions that we are actually changing the ordinance for, or perhaps adding new ordinance? We have current positions in those, current people doing those positions. So does that mean that we're gonna have to?
Not all of them.
Not all of them, but the one that we have.
Those are funded and were approved by the budget.
Yes. Those are gonna stay with the people that currently have?
Temporary provisional or acting, however you, I don't think it's acting, no memorandum was done and sent to the City Council. I think it's provisional basis.
So does that mean that we're gonna have to post these new positions? They're gonna have to reapply?
So tha- tha- that's true. So that's a question to the City Council, to the City Attorney's Office on another position that we've reclassified or about to reclassify. Actually, that was reclassified by the council. That's the nurses' position. And the question to the City Attorney is whether we need to repost this position and does a person need to reapply? That's currently filling. I haven't received an answer to that question, but once I do, I'm pretty sure applies.
Can you, can can is can can the sense opinion apply to this?
I think, I I think in the past it has. Any job postings, uh, however, not part of the reorganization. Like, an individual, one reclassification that has come down to the council for approval has to be reposted and has to be interviewed for. However, part of the reorganization that I've been in the past, we have not reposted those positions. Unless they're unless they're new positions.
Yes, because I mean, if we do that, what we what we're setting ourselves.
Right, unless they're new. So so I'm assuming the executive, I mean, the Director of Healthy Human Services position has to be posted. The Executive Director is gonna have to be posted anyway, because if that person gets elected for the Director, that position becomes vacant. But none of the other positions that are currently filled with people right now would need to be posted.
Those are, those.
Because they're not changing, they're not changing positions, right? They're still in their same position that you were requesting.
But I mean, if we change qualifications and those people currently do not qualify for those positions, then what happened?
They they remain in their positions. Every reorganization that we've done, they remain in their positions. Now, that's not to say that Director cannot sit down and reassess their qualifications. We've done that HUD, that was one of HUD's requirements back in two thousand five. It says, we will, the Director who's coming in with HUD will sit down and will assess every individual's education and experience based on these new job description. Only one person stepped out. Everybody else remained, so no changes were made. But that doesn't mean it can't be done. I don't think that's the intent for this one, that we are trying to. I mean, none of these positions, we have asked, except for the Director positions, to add qualifications that were not there before, and salary that was not there before.
Councilor de la Cruz, you have a question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Well, the sentence basically on this one, um, section three point four, three point four of the charter, it's section, um.
What what page?
Let me see, hold on one second.
So so my questions, questions for me to take back and um and 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 bring back to you is, from what I gather, is the the Executive Director, um. You want a position here that was under three point seven, you said, and you wanted it to, why we were changing it?
On the bottoms of air, yes, it's three point seven, uh, on the new ordinance, but it was a four point three on the old.
Correct, so check, um, page nine, it says section four point three, and on page ten, it says three point seven.
Yes.
I I I think that was a question she did ask me. I left that three point seven. Um, and my memory goes back, is I couldn't remember if Mr. Melendez came down before the council to be confirmed by the appointment of Mayor Lantigua. And I told her I'd get back to her, and I don't think I did, so that's my fault. I'll get back to you.
On the recreational director, and then you have a consistent, you have you have four point three on on the proposal and the current.
So Director of Recreation on page fifteen says four point three.
And then on sixteen, it say four four, four point three.
Sixteen, it says four point three, four point three.
Yeah.
So it's the same, okay.
So it's the same.
All right. Uh.
For some of them says four point three, another one says four, um, four point three, other one says seven point, uh, three point seven. Um, so that's something that we should clarify.
Mr. Vice Chair, I mean, Mr. Vice President, um, have we talked about the Board of Health yet, or is that the next?
No, we finished with the Director of, um, of Human Service, I mean, of Recreation.
Board of Health, which is also underneath the, um, what's the name of the position? So, Board of Health is something, I think.
Board of Health?
No, not the Board of Health.
I don't think we included them.
Not the Board of Health. Is the Community Health Specialist.
You look at the Community Health Specialist for the senior center.
No, 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 no. The Director of Department of Health and Human Services in the direction of the mayor and with the policy direction and support of the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, and the Youth Commission.
The position itself.
Well, essentially, that the person is gonna be, I guess, working with the Board of Health, because the Board of Health is a, is a, is a board. Not necessarily is gonna be under that. They're they're an independent board.
Uh, correct, they're an independent board, uh, but they're, uh, they do get support from the Inspection Service Department.
Correct.
Um.
So I guess that they're gonna be supported by these two departments.
So so.
Based on these.
What page, what's, what page?
I don't wanna guess, so.
What page, right?
Uh, page two.
Two, two?
Page two.
Other other the direction of the mayor with the policy direction and support of the Board of Health, Council on Aging, and the Youth Commission.
Whoa.
And the Youth Commission.
Look, so so this is, when when I, when when this was first, uh, approached, I thought that, uh, potentially, what, uh, you guys might wanna do is to change the Board of Health into a Department of Health. You know, essentially merge, modernize, you know, the whole system, because what we've basically done is we've kept the Board of Health model, right? We didn't do the work to create a Department of Health, but instead, we, in the last, you know, twenty, thirty years, we created this Inspection Service Department, right? Um, and it's like this, like, hybrid sort of model. I thought that as you guys were moving forward, that what you guys wanted to do was sort of change, um, modernize the entire department. So it makes sense for the Board of Health to get its support from the Inspection Service Department since what authorizes the Inspection Service Department to, um, essentially checking, code enforcement is the Board of Health. It's not the Inspection Service Department. It's the Board of Health and the Inspection Service Department is acting as, uh, their agents. So, you know, when I see support of, so I'm I'm just trying to make sure, see, like, is it essentially what it's saying here by support, maybe it's not support, is that they're gonna work with the Board of Health to do things? I don't know.
Yeah, so so when we, when we, when we, when we inserted that that language in there, uh, what we were seeing is other, um, other Director of Health and Human Services or Executive Directors, some places have Executive Directors, uh, had that language in there. We didn't call them to see why they had it in there, but we assumed that, you know, health and human services has something to do with the Board of Health, right?
And and you are completely correct, right? So like, if you're gonna have a department, a Director of Department of Health and Human Services, you want the Board of Health to be sort of like in in the mix underneath it.
Right.
Um, the state has.
What we didn't wanna do is, uh, we didn't want to put Board Director, I mean, a Director Department of of Board, uh, Department of Health, or the Board of Health under this, because they wouldn't, you know, this is a commission, this is the independent board. Um, also, you know, they work with the Inspection Services Department directly, which was reorganized in two thousand and twelve. And so this is just basically support, uh, contacting the doctor, uh, Dr. Corin, uh, who is a physician for the city of Lawrence, contacting the board, possibly to talk about, you know, seniors, diabetes, exercises, things that are occurring in, or in an emergency such as the two thousand and six Mother's Day flood in Lawrence, where all three of our rivers were flooded, right? We had no one with direct health knowledge out in in about, right? Also.
That all makes sense.
Yeah, also, in 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 the school department, well, not the school department, in the summer, I think it was a summer, and I can't think, I can't remember the year, there was this big, um, I forget the, I forget the name of the disease, uh, it's not flesh-eating bacteria, but kids get it, uh, has to do with strep throat and stuff like that. And, uh, a task force had to be created at the last moment to go into, you know, some of these schools with, uh, several nurses and doctors to find out who had contacts with some of these children. And we didn't have a city physician at the time. And so the Board of Health was not part of that. It was all done by the school department. So this is, that, this is where the Board of Health and possibly the the doctor would fall in.
I I com- I completely see the importance of, uh.
Just wanting to be more harder, more added.
So so mass, mass general law sort of states, um, how you create health departments. Um, and within, like, there's a provision with, uh, there, section twenty-six A, um, and it talks about.
What mass general law?
Um, uh, chapter one, one, one.
Okay.
Section two, six, eight. So it talks about the transitioning of between a Board of Health to a Department of Health. Um, and within that, it, the the reason for that is to do everything you just mentioned. Um, and it sounds like you, like, you guys are trying to go in that direction. Um, but by having the Board of Health, you're essentially, you're splitting the this supporting role between, uh, two departments. Um, where, where the Board of Health is not just the policy aspect, it's also the, um, sort of like the 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 codes and and things. So you can't just, you can't do one, um, without the other.
So I I I don't know, I don't know if the mayor was, had intentions to create a Department of Health.
I mean, we're.
But the Department of Health and Human Services, I mean, like, you know, Department of Health has for, that falls under the Board of Health. I can go back and ask him what the intent of this whole thing, but I I believe that the whole thing falling in was the emergency. Who coordinates the whole entire, you know, human activity of of gathering, you know, emergency supplies, provisions, providing services, information? I mean, you have been, I think, most of you have been, not all of you have been right in the front lines of of the Council on Aging, and Martha Velez is during this whole entire gas emergencies. And she's still continuing working, you know, from wherever she's working at or with whomever she's working with, trying to get, you know, people back in, you know, I guess, normalcy, if you will. So so that that was a whole entire thing. About now bringing, you know, the Board of Health issues or health concerns, like, right now, I don't even wanna say that, but you know, right now, the news is about triple E and stuff like that. I don't know if that should fall under the Director of Health and Human Services? Or the Board of Health with Inspection Services? So so those are questions that I have to ask the mayor about.
So that, so what you just stated is the exact problem that I think, um, might be created in the future, not necessarily right now. I completely agree with sort of like the logic behind it. That's why cities have departments of health to ensure that there's someone at the head that has training, experience, education around public health. Right? Um, so that way, uh, whether it's, um, you know, the drug epidemic or a serious emergency in a city, you have someone that is trained to bring everything together, emergency management, whatever it is.
I'll bring, I'll bring, I'll bring it to his attention.
Yeah, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
So, quick question. Um, currently, the city of Metuhen is going through an emergency because of the, uh, mosquito issues?
The, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Currently, the city of Metuhen, it's going through a, a, a situation with the mosquitoes.
Oh, with the triple E?
Um, what's gonna happen if the sentence happening, what's gonna happen if that situation?
I I did not know they were going through that. I I know I heard some town, some cities south of here, but I didn't know about Metuhen. Um, I I I don't know. This is a question I'll ask the mayor. I'll I'll ask the mayor about that. I I came for reorganization, I didn't.
Important to have some type of.
I just, I just used it as a, as a, you know, uh, an example of what I thought.
No, no, what I'm saying is, in case that something like that happened, is this department gonna be dealing with that, or is that?
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know. I'm gonna ask, I'll ask the mayor. I'll ask the mayor about that. I thought, I thought, I thought that would be a Board of Health, a Board of Health decision of what needed to be done or what needs to be done. The physician knowing the dangers and who he calls upon or what department he would call upon to say, we need to do this. Do we call the Department of Public Works and say, we need to spray the whole entire city? Do we call the Inspection Service Department and do some education? Do we call the Director of Human Health and Services and say, get on it, we need a plan of action? I don't know. I'll I'll go ask.
Um, Mr. Vice President, um, so I would say, yeah, I I would think.
All three.
Without, no, without having a Director, a, um, Director of Department of Health, it would be the city physician, who is the Chair of the Board of Health, right? He, this would be the person that would be making the call.
Right now, as it stands, that would be him.
So right now, as it stands, it would be him, right? But usually, um, city physicians, you know, in most cities and towns, it's not a part-time position. You know, you're paying someone more than, you know, the twenty K, um, that, um, the current city physician is being paid. You have someone that's doing this like full-time, not, um, you know, not part-time or volunteer, whatever it is. Um, when you switch over to Department of Health, I think you get rid of that role. And instead of having a city physician, a doctor, you're able to find, you know, other individuals that have, um, you know, different qualifications that would be able to do that.
I I agree.
So.
I think at one point, I mean, uh, I provided some documents to the, uh, for historical individuals in the library of job descriptions that the city of Lawrence had back in the nineteen forties, fifties, and sixties. In it, we had nurses, we had a hospital, I think it was Burke Hospital. We had physicians, we had surgeons, we had all these different departments and different, uh, positions. At one point, the city attorney, I mean, I'm sorry, the city physician was a full-time job. And when I arrived, it was not a full-time job. It was the chairperson of the Board of Health with a thirty thousand dollar stipend. That was it. And so I don't know how it changed or why it changed, but I, I think, I understand, going back to the times of the nineteen seventies, there's a Board of Health, a Department of Health, a whole bunch of people who do health things. I I agree, yeah.
Councilor, does anyone have any questions? Uh, question, question, this question in general, I mean, I think we went through the whole package.
I just, I just, this is very, this could be a very long answer, but I'm hoping for a short answer. This proposal is put together and you started talking about it during the beginning of your presentation, but wh- why, when I, when I go back to my constituents and I explain to them why I support it or ask questions regarding this, what impacts are they going to feel? How are they gonna be better off with a reorganization? Tell me what it is that I could tell them that says, this is why I support it, because this is what's going to happen, it's gonna make your life better.
So so if you're looking at this, at this reorganization, there's only a net new one position, right? There's one position is. There's one position is new, everything else is already there, it's just collectively putting them back together. And so, we want better communication among those departments, especially during the next crisis, hopefully it doesn't happen. But a next emergency that may call for health and human service, emergency services. To be coordinated under one roof, including for veterans, you know, we all know we had some veterans out there that, that were in desperate need as well. So that's one of them, and then the, the other one is, uh, to ensure that there's accountability. Uh, and someone is present and somebody is directly or administratively supervising these individuals.
I couldn't understand that last part, that's that last part, could you repeat that?
That someone is either administratively or generally supervising these individuals.
That would suggest that we don't have, they're being supervised now, correct?
Excuse me?
Those people are being supervised right now, correct?
By the mayor, yes.
Uh, any other counselor which is, uh, to ask questions about, about this, uh, new, new reorganization? And the creation of that, uh, uh, the Department of Human, uh, Health and Human Services? In general, in particular? There is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this behalf?
Is that me?
Uh, public hearing is now closed, uh, counselors, uh, there is any?
Counselor President? I'd like to make a motion that, uh, now that, that public hearing is now closed, that, uh, we send this document up to the full council. Uh, saying, of course, the recommendations, um, at this point, that we've got some questions, uh, regarding the Department of Public Health. Regarding Veterans Affairs and submitting those answers to the full council within thirty days as required by our charter.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Discussion, Counsel LaPiano?
Thank you, I, I think that there was a, a, not just questions, I think that there was a lot that needed to be discussed with the mayor. Uh, but the Director Bonanis to have a conversation with the mayor, this doesn't look like to me like it's a document that's ready to be voted on. I mean, it's, it's been, it didn't go through ordinance, right?
Uh, no, it, it came through the committee of the hall, from there, we recommend it to the full council and, and, uh, and we make a decision.
So this would probably be the fastest go-around for, you know, not just like one ordinance change. But a, a complete sort of change i- within our ordinance. For a small ordinance change, it takes months for just, you know, for something small, uh, to go through. Um, while I, you know, I, 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 I would necessarily, I wouldn't vote, vote against this thing. But I think that there is, there is more work that needs to be done before it's presented, uh, to the full council, so I'll.
So Counsel LaPiano, do you have, um, any other motion that you would like to present instead of just sending it to the council?
I, I, I would just motion to, to recess to give the, the Director an opportunity to come back to us.
There's a motion on the floor already, counsel?
Yes, um, it's open for discussion. And, um, are you, are you asking for another motion or we would like to hear from the Director before you, you proceed?
I'm not, I mean.
I, I just, I just want to make sure that, I, I, there's a motion on the table, right? Um, to send to the council with the recommendations that.
Depending the recommendation that comes from.
And sent to the council, right? So, so I just wanted to come up here and make sure that I have all the recommendations and all the requests. That you're going to need so I can send that council. And if I can start real quickly as to what I have and what I don't have, you tell me and I write it down, okay?
Okay.
So, the first one I have, I, I'm going on page one because, uh, Counsel Pajano wanted me to check. Mass General Law, chapter one-eleven, section twenty-six A, on how a Health and Human Services Agency or Department is created. Want, wanted me to ask the mayor if that's the direction that we're going with the Director of Department of Health and Human Services.
So, go by section, hold on one second, on that, on that specific request, is that have to be responded by what department?
By what department?
Yes, that by the, by the personal department? Or that's somebody else that is, it, it's.
No, I, I will be sending you the response, eh, whether they come from the city attorney or they come from the mayor or they come from Boston. I will send it directly to them, within the twenty-one days of the city council.
So, for the, for, for you to have that answer, you need the assistant of what other department?
Oh, for, for the Mass General Law one-eleven, uh, that's written in law, so I just gotta ask the mayor, uh, the direction that he is taking with the Health and Human Services. If it's in, in the same general direction that Counsel Pajano has requested it, and if so. How does he want to make the Board of Health more relevant to this department?
Okay, so you need. You need the assistant of the mayor, correct?
I'm ready to.
Okay, no problem, go for the next one.
Also, um, I have. Checking several, several positions, uh, including the Director of Veteran Services on two things. First is, uh, page nine said four-three and page ten say three-seven, one-oh-Y is changing to three-seven. Also, Mass General Law that Counsel LePlante has provided, can you repeat that law again, Counselor?
Sure, uh, it's chapter fifteen, Master of Law is chapter fifteen. Uh, there are two sections that I think are relevant.
Fourteen?
I, I think section ten and section.
Fourteen, I think it was?
Fourteen. Control, but there may be others as well.
I'll check that with the city attorney's office.
So you need the city attorney, uh, assistant for the.
Or an attorney that represents the, I'm gonna go with the city attorney here, uh, also.
Or the attorney that, what?
Usually, i- if the city attorney says, you know, go outside, I'll go outside, I usually ask her, you know, her office. Um, also, um, you wanted me to check any other laws besides the one that, uh, Counsel Plante provided to me. About the veteran services, uh, Counsel Pajano wanted a copy of the salary range for the union. To see what the grades are and also a copy of the, uh, definitions of, of supervision for the city, right?
That's your department, right?
That's my department, both of those are my department, correct? And one more thing that you wanted me to check, but I think it wasn't, it's almost of a check, but it's a discussion as to. Why these physicians have bachelor's degree and not recommended master's degree.
So, so the, just the, the top one, the.
Just the top.
The, the Director of.
With experience on anything that has to do with, you know, health, human services.
I don't know, I, I'm, I'm just, again, I'm not thinking about the people in there now.
I can ask that question, because, like you said, for the future, I'll ask that question, anything else, did I miss anything else?
Uh, section three-point, uh, four-point-three instead of.
On the, on the, I said that, on the veteran services, yep, I have that one, yep.
So.
Anything else?
Just clarify a couple of things, so.
There were a couple of things.
Yes, so, so far, you need the assistant of the mayor, the mayor, the, the mayor's office, city attorney for two different things. And the personal department, which is you and a couple of the things, so Counsel Pajano, do you have other, other clarifications?
So, we talked about, um, I don't know if you've already mentioned this, but the numbers, if there's an interest, um, uh, from the presenters. To put it all, sort of, that it sort of follows a numerical order?
Oh, uh, that would be the city attorney's office, I'll ask her about the ordinance numbers, how their numbers in sequence or non-sequence.
And, and did, did you, did you mention, um, I didn't hear, regarding the Veterans Affairs? About how, um, how it does not conflict with Mass General Law?
Correct, that was the Mass General Law that Counsel Plante provided me.
Any other questions, uh, that, that we have brought up to this concern? Alright, so far, you have two things for the, from the mayor, uh, three things from the city attorney.
Two from personnel.
Three things from the, the personal department, so. It's a lot of work.
Uh, those, those are really simple to get, I don't have to create anything, I just gotta ask.
Counsel Levy?
Thank you for coming and explaining all of this thing right now. But I, I agree, I agree with my Counselo Pajano that I, I think so that, you know, with all of these recommendations. And all of the paperwork that is still, we are missing in here, we should leave it in the committee of the hall and to come back another day. Uh, for discussion and just to make sure that everything that we've been asking for is in complying and with the. Uh, the recommendation that we needed in the information or some that we are asking for. So I think so that we should leave it in here, uh, not to send it to the, it's, uh, the, the city council in full for. Uh, for review, but that just to keep it in, come back another day, uh, and look it out. That everything is in place and is in order according to what we requested, thank you.
My Counselor Chris?
Yes, thank you, um, uh, Mister Bonet, uh, how long do you think it's gonna take you to, uh, do all of this investigation?
So, so, so it's not so much an investigation as inquiry?
Uh, homework, yeah, he gave you homework.
Uh, so I'm on vacation this week, however, I will get on it right away, uh, hopefully have something to you way before the twenty-one day deadline, I think it is. Uh, so that way you can have some information, some of it I can get you immediately, tomorrow morning you will have it in your inboxes. That'd be the salary range, that'll be the administrative, uh, definitions of what, uh, supervision are, or not the administrative. The supervision definitions, uh, and then I can have some communications out to both the mayor and the city attorney about, you know, their respective requests. Or what you're requesting them to provide.
And that will include?
Then I would have to wait on their, you know, I, I can maybe push the city attorney, I can't push my boss, I can only, you know, recommend that he provides me a fast answer.
So, but let me, um, Counsel, uh, let me, let me just clarify a couple of things, once it's sent, we send it to the full council. So we have the responsibility of acting before some days, if those answered, we don't, we don't get it.
Right, you can vote up or down, correct?
We can, we can vote it down, which basically some of the council have concern about it because they believe it's, it's the right thing to do. But we have the responsibility of taking a yes or no vote on that. Uh, if, if we keep it at this level and we, we, we recess the, 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 the meeting. Instead of unjoin the meeting, uh, we still have the, the period, the waiting period to act upon, so I just want to clarify that.
Then my, my recommendation would be to, to send it to the full council. With the condition that we're getting the reply back of all the details that we request.
And, and like I said, uh, if we do that and then we, and we don't get that, those answers.
Then we don't have to vote.
We're gonna have to vote, uh, yes or no before a period of time, which start clicking as soon as we send it over. Uh, so basically, it, it, the pressure is on the council, so Counsel Pajano?
Um, also, um, so, so, so what happens, I'm sorry, just for point of information, what happens if you table it? Does it, does the clock stop, does it pause?
If we adjourn the meeting tonight.
Recess.
If we adjourn the meeting tonight, we have to act within the period that we're supposed to. If we recess the meeting, we haven't finished the meeting yet, so we're still in the meeting, so we can, we can.
So the clock pauses, I mean, does the, the time pauses, okay, I, I'm just for important information, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interfere.
So Counsel LaPiano?
Um, also, there's, uh, uh, I had questions regarding the Human Rights Commission, is it active, who are the members, is there still quorum?
I can ask, that, that would be a, a question to the mayor, probably his office staff.
Is there, um, also, eh, with this, I, I, with this reforming of the Human Rights Commission position? Is there an interest within the mayor to hire someone within the executive director?
I can tell you that's affirmative, that, that was exactly why, uh, like I said, if you look at the ordinance that's written right now. There's only three sentences in one paragraph for the whole entire human rights, and it says, the Human Rights Commission. She'll consist of an executive director, that's it, that's it. And, and, and it's, and it's called, the title of it, Staff of the Human Rights Commission, that's the, that's all it has, so. When we, when we created the job description back in two thousand and five, that's exactly what we did it for, and because it wasn't in the ordinance. We've again sent it down so it can be corrected, so we can start posting these positions.
So, let me ask you a quick question.
Course it gotta be funded, yeah.
Is that position gonna have other, other members of that, the Director of Human Rights is gonna have people on there?
So the Director of Human Rights has under. Think of it, clerical position? It does, it has a, it has a one-third of a clerical administrative assistant.
Oh.
So most likely that would be someone who's taking minutes of the commission's meetings, putting together packets. Maybe, uh, receiving, um, or having office hours to support the director when they do hire a director.
And essentially, if that person's gonna be working with the, uh, Human Rights, uh, Board?
The administrative assistant or the executive director?
The executive director.
Also, the exec- executive director works for the commission, I mean, literally works for the commission. Uh, they provide direction, they provide guidance and requests as to. Uh, the executive director conducting investigations associated with human rights violations.
So essentially, it's like that semester.
Yeah, so whether it be police violation, you know, human rights, housing, jobs, discrimination, that human rights director investigates. Inquiry and then provides it to the commission with recommendations, now the recommendations are not punitive in, 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 in any sort. The recommendations are where to go to file a formal complaint. Because they believe that there is such case that a violation has occurred.
Uh, so in, in that line, it says, uh, duties require for qualifications, duties require knowledge of community and group relations. General management and hearing procedures equivalent, equivalent to four years of college. Um, just, I, I think I know, uh, where you're going with that, I just think that that language there might. Be better to be clearer, I guess.
So we didn't change, I don't think we changed anything on the human rights, um, except to say that we brought it down in two thousand and five. As we thought that it was approved, we have it as being sent and we have it as being approved, however, there's no ordinance number that was assigned to it. Uh, however, if, if, if council, uh, wants to change the qualification to the position.
So, so I'm not, so I'm saying that the, currently, it, it does, duties require knowledge of community and group relations, general management. And then it says, and hearing procedures equivalent to four years of college, like it.
Oh, you're on page fourteen.
Fourteen, yes.
So if you go back, find this packet, it's really important, because this packet has a job description, it's a four-pager. And it has skills, it has knowledges, it has abilities of, you know, the positions and it's a little bit more delineated about the job.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I, I can do that.
So this is a, they have six pages, this position has six pages, some of the things that they're going to be doing. Uh, provide leadership to the city in all areas of health and human services, including initiation, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry. Uh, direct day-to-day planning and operations of the commission, including activities such as community education, outreach programs, assessment activities, investigations. Fact-finding meetings, public hearings, preparation of grants and liaisons with related city and private organizations. It was like, public hearings, I think they had, some people have come to the city of Lawrence to, to, to conduct some sort of hearings at one point. I think it was maybe immigration or something like that, I forget what it is, so something similar to that.
I understand why this would be important, it just says, hearing procedures equivalent to four years of college.
Right, so a bachelor's degree, um, we also give, uh, if, if, if it does say, um. Procedures equivalent to four-year college, yeah, that's it, bachelor's degree, anything, anything that has to do, you know, uh. If, we, I have upstairs, and maybe I, maybe I could send it to you so that way you, you could be aware of it, I, I write it down here. Uh, I have several documents that if the job description and the ordinance was written to. Give you credit for education or experience, where, where it says a combination of education and experience, then there's a way that I do that. So I provide, uh, if you don't have the whole entire bachelor's degree and it provides you opportunity to do the equivalent. For every two years of experience, you can use it for one year of education. However, you can't use it again for experience, so let's say you don't have a bachelor's degree, but you require a bachelor's degree for the position or equivalent. And you have ten years of experience, for ev- if you want me to use your years of experience for as a bachelor's degree. I will take away eight years of those ten years and only give you credit for two years of experience. So that, I, I have that for masters and bachelors and associates, I can send that to you. As well as if it calls for experience versus. As well as, if it calls for experience versus education, I will give you two years' experience for every one year of education. So there is a, there's a trade-off. And it's done like that across both for everyone, so that way it's fair. So we're looking at eight years of experience, other procedures, hearing procedures, or something equivalent to four years, factors. Maybe I should just say eight years' experience, right?
Okay, um, any other questions? So we have a motion on the table just to clarify, that is to send it to the full council pending, uh, three recommendations out of the boss, out of the mayor, um, office. Uh, three recommendations out of the City Attorney, and, uh, three recommendations out of the par- the Personal Department. So, all the questions, uh, to send it to the full council pending those recommendations. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
No.
Uh, Rocco, please? Uh, Rocco?
Rocco. Dave Abdul, Counsel, yes.
Counsel Michael Payne?
Yes.
Counsel, uh, Anna Levy?
No.
Counsel Javale Rodriguez?
No, I mean.
Okay, uh, Counsel, um, Apo Pajano?
No.
Counsel Maria de la Cruz?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Brian DePena?
No.
And, um, I vote either or, doesn't, that's not going through. I vote yes, but this motion fails.
Point, point of parliamentary inquiry?
Sure.
So seeing that the hearing has closed, the public hearing has closed, um, it says that within thirty days following the close of the public hearing, which has already happened, the committee shall file a written report with the clerk of the council, which sets forth in specific terms the action that it recommends be taken on the proposal, and the reasons for such recommendations. Copy of the report shall be made available to any person who may request the same. So, the clock is now ticking, we still have thirty days. So, we may, we're gonna submit something at some point, but the clock is ticking.
Uh, we can either move, uh, recess this meeting and allow this meeting to continue in, in, in another week, and the clock is ticking, as you mentioned, or we can, uh, send it to the full council, as, as, as was the intention, but it fails. So, either or, the full council is gonna be, uh, here, on the Committee of the Hall, or at the full council, and, uh, we'll make a decision on them. In the meantime, the only thing that I can tell you is that we need a motion to either table the matters, and recess, or adjourn, or, uh, try another motion to send to the full council.
Motion to recess?
There is a motion to recess. There's a motion to recess?
Second.
Discussion?
In second.
Discussion? You can, it's not a motion to table, it's a motion to recess, discussion?
All right.
So I don't mind voting in recess, cause that may be a good idea, maybe we come back and get the answers, but we still have to get this thing to the full council in thirty, at least some sort of report at the council in thirty days, so. Can we get a date by which we're gonna meet again, so we're not kinda just kinda going in limbo? Can we look at our calendars and schedule it right now?
So today's the twenty-seven, on the third is gonna be the full council meeting. We can either meet out here on, on the ten, or any, any other day on the, on next, any other day next week. Uh, Labor Day is on Monday, we're gonna be here anyway on Tuesday. So, either the fourth or the fifth, that can be, that can be a, a, a good day, or in the week of the, uh, on, of the thirteenth, the night to the thirteenth. The seventeen is gonna be our second meeting of the month, which puts us, uh, within the thirty days, uh, period. Uh, so counselors, when I, um, everyone here prefer to meet, on this committee, Committee of the Hall, to allow the department, uh, the different department to report to us on those questions that we raised?
Can we meet on the fifth?
The fifth is gonna be Thursday next week.
May I have a question?
Of course.
Mr. Bonet, you said that you're going on vacation, when are you coming back?
Um, Tuesday, September third. But, but I'll be doing some of these, uh, things immediately tomorrow morning, I'm just, just madder of getting on my email.
No, we're looking to meet, and that way you can be here, yeah.
Oh, to me, ooh, so I am type on cases, arbitrations, and civil service hearings. Uh, I would have to look at my calendar upstairs in my office, but I, I know I have a lot, uh, in between, so, uh, can I get back to you on that one?
Uh, we're looking to make a determination as to when we're gonna come back in this committee?
You know what, I, I mean, at nighttime is okay, I can make myself available, it's no problem, yeah.
So essentially, we're looking to meet on the fifth?
Fifth of September?
That was a suggestion by Counsel de la Cruz.
I'm in the city.
What about the ninth of the tenth?
The ninth of the tenth, that's also, um, good days. And we, some of the, some of us are gonna be here the following week, uh, since we're gonna be having, uh, committees. So either Monday or Tuesday, uh, there is committee days on those day. We can definitely meet, uh, six-thirty or seven, or six-thirty any day on the following week. And, uh, and we can meet early, and then we can get that, and we can get those reports. So, counselors, I have so far one suggestion, which is gonna be September the fifth.
The eleventh has worked, maybe fifth is my bad.
That work for everybody? Or there is any other suggestions? The ninth work?
Eleven, I can do.
Hmm?
I can do eleven.
The eleven, Wednesday, the eleven? Just remember, September then, then, the eleven, of this, that day is gonna be a lot of different things going on.
Nine eleven, eleven? Nine eleven.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, we're probably gonna have a budget meeting.
Yes, it's true, we're gonna have a budget meeting, so we can, we can be here. So nine eleven, there's a six-thirty, work for everybody?
Six-thirty?
Okay, nine eleven, there's a six-thirty.
Nine eleven.
I mean, I'm saying, that day is gonna be a lot of stuff, but but Budget and Finance is gonna be here. So counselors, motion to recess and meet on, uh, September eleven at six-thirty PM. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Yeah, I saw it. Thank you, counselors.